Hey, good morning, everyone. Chair will call this meeting by the county commissions on December eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. The order, the first item on our agenda is improvements of December fifth and no figure approved. Yeah, the movement second. The amendments changes to the minutes. Not hearing any of them, open in favor adoption, if I say, I was opposed, opposed to the unanimous, I can sue us to award the bid. The financing of. One who shared vehicles authorized. Raven and Bauer, the administration, like to feed the documents.
Just good things, Mr. Chairman, this is a purchase that was in the budget and you all approved. The vehicles are finally in or close to.
Very close there.
Very close to me.
Yes, fully built.
Like a three or six month delay is something.
So we asked Diane to begin to look for the best financing situation, so we'll turn it over.
So I have two scenarios that came in. The first one was from M and T Bank. So the total is two hundred and ninety thousand eighteen dollars and fifty cents for the four vehicles and all of the equipment, the complete package and whatnot. So and Ray wanted to finance this over five years. So M and T Bank came back with a lease purchase agreement at a rate of four point three three six percent. Camden Bank is doing their proposal is a traditional auto loan, five year auto loans, and they came in at a three point seven eight nine percent. Which is a great rate right now for a vehicle loan. So those are the two. Scenario is proposals that we received on these vehicles.
So obviously the finance department and I recommend Camden Bank.
And they're willing to whenever, I mean, the thing is, they want this done before the end of the year, before Christmas, so we would execute the loan. Before Christmas, I don't know what the timing of the vehicles is.
Last I knew, the van was in QC, which means they just got to go over everything. That was about two weeks ago.
Yeah.
And the vehicles, they're waiting on a couple little intricate parts for some mounting hardware, but everything's just about ready to go.
So we're going to have to execute this alone probably next week, and they're willing to come out here with all the documents for you to sign. Yeah, yeah, so they're willing, so we'd have to set up a date and time with them to do that. And then.
Does it mean I have to take back my nasty note?
But to the time being. Yeah, I think maybe they're trying to make up for it. Yeah. It is. Yeah, yeah. I mean, M and T came in with a good rate on their lease purchase agreement too. You know, I've just found over the years, the lease purchase agreements, the interest rate has just been higher than an auto loan.
Yeah, it kind of surprises you. I mean, it is a lease purchase in the sense that at the end of the lease, we own it for a dollar. But, you know, so it's not like your traditional lease. Where, you know, yeah, return the vehicle in, but. For whatever reason, that's what M and T chose to offer us.
That was the better rate that they could offer us was through a lease purchase agreement. But anyhow. Camden came through with a great rate on the auto loan, and so I think we'll.
Yeah.
We'll shoot for next week to get all of this done. And then I can talk to Catherine and Ray about.
You know, push him on the paperwork then.
Yeah, yeah, and all it just installing a few part pieces.
I just care more about the paperwork, you know, push him on the paperwork. They've got to have that, so.
Well, we have all the invoices, everything. Yeah, we have it. Yeah, we need you. We're great about getting pulling that all together so we can get this and.
Is there anything else you need in addition to the invoices right now, or we?
Let me just go through. I mean, I think we're in pretty good shape. You know, we. I have all the information with regard regards to insuring the vehicles, all of that, so. I think it's just going to be matter of getting the money from the bank, and then we would cut a check to the vendor. Yeah. And. You go pick up the vehicles.
Thank you.
Okay, so Chair, then motion to award the bid to Camden Bank for the three point seven eight percent. Those four vehicles in for the discussion. You know, I think I was in favor, let's sort of take a roll call, I think we think it's money, a lot of money. I should have a place there, which I love it myself. Yes, the votes unanimous. Okay, that's that, right?
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, if there's anything I need, I'll let you know, but I. Thanks.
Good, good sharing.
Have a nice Christmas, guys.
Oh, I'm sure I'll be calling you also.
For something. It's all good. You guys have a good day.
All right, item number three, city development block grant planning grant. Morning, Brian.
Morning, missionaries. My name is Blair Haney. I'm a regional planner with Schaffler Regional Planning Commission. You may recall, I was here one of your November meetings to discuss block grant application. It was a co-application between the county and CAPS. To receive funding for a couple of shelters. So that's been submitted and we await word notification. So fingers crossed on that one, but I think we've got a good application. I think we've got a strong argument, so we'll see.
But I just, real quick. You, you, Cap did an excellent job of that, you know, and Diane, I mean, they did an excellent job pulling that together. That was. I was trying to figure out in my head how to tie it all together with COVID and, 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 you know. Betsy Andrews Parker did a great job at tying it all together. I wish I would have thought of it.
It's, um. Yeah, I mean, grant applications are largely a marketing proposal. Why is yours better than someone else's? You know, why do you get the money? And I thought that they made a great argument. I thought they put forth a good application. We were originally going to work with Dover, I think it was, and we had to pivot, you know, because they're entitlement community and work with you guys, so we haven't. I mean, grants are always under the gun. This one was particularly under the gun. So, yeah, anyone who was a real team.
But everybody worked really well.
Yeah, agreed. So which brings us to the, you know, what we're doing here today. The, the idea is to listen to what you all are thinking in the way of affordable housing in the county, potentially on county owned land. And what the possibilities for that might be and how to get from point A to point B. You know, I can help direct you, but you all know your resources and assets better than I do, so much like this last application will be a collaborative thing. Sort of like stepping back for a second. The CBG program had a problem with getting applicants shovel ready for an implementation grant. So what they did was they implemented. Something called a planning grant. So for twenty-five thousand dollars or for a very stripped down application, you can get twenty-five thousand dollars to sort of. Plan your project, then get to an implementation grant, which are allowed to be up to five hundred thousand dollars. And that was a great help. It would allow someone to do some studies or get an engineer to do a design. To then get permits, whatever it might be, but twenty-five K still isn't all that much. And there's also stuff to do, like even before that step. So what they did was they created what's called the transformative planning grant, a TPG. And they asked all the RPCs, the, the, the state gave the RPCs money to build a pipeline of projects in your region. To that could then go to a planning grid, that could then go to an implementation grid. So right now, I'm on the tail end of our TPG for Schaffler Regional Planning Commission. And that's sort of what brings me to today. And it's, it's mostly housing focused, housing project focused, but CDBG does do other things. They do infrastructure and stuff. But they, they, this one is going to be housing. So if NIBO connected to Shinbone, you're doing a housing project like an expansion of a sewer main to bring in additional. You could do that because you can make that tie. I don't think you could renovate a library and make the tie to housing, but. You know, wait and see, I guess.
Yeah.
So that's, that's sort of where we are. I'm finishing up. Doing a spreadsheet of projects that are at various levels of, of ready to go in our region. Public sector projects, housing related. All CBG projects have to benefit low mod people, so they're all by effect have to be affordable in some capacity. And then the idea is to then maybe, let's say I get ten, twelve projects in a pipeline. Three of them are going to be in a position to get ready to go to a planning grid. Speaking to George, talking to Diane, I've kind of got to the position where I think you guys might be in a good position for that, probably one of the better positions. Because it sounds like you've done some of the light work, identified parcels, or I mean, it's one giant parcel, but where within your giant parcel land? Could it, could you support it? What would that look like? So that's kind of where I'm at right now. I want to hear where you're at. I want to hear your suggestions on how to move forward. Right now, in the immediate future, my focus is on completing this transformative planning grant. And then after the new year, when this is sort of behind me, then we can start talking about the planning grant, but we could have both conversations today. So that's sort of where I'm at. I guess I'll pause and, and sort of turn it over to you, hear what your thoughts are, ask me any questions you want.
So under the, I remember, right, under the old program, we used to be able to run water and sewer as an example. To the project, like that's what I'm thinking. We would use the half a million for, it would be actually. But to put the infrastructure.
Yeah.
Okay, so then. While we handle the housing component, if we were to do this. I guess that's going to have to be up for a further discussion, whether, whether we have the private sector do it, we. Which is probably only a real good way to do it. The, in our, in our plan for the new nursing home, we had about a hundred and eighty units of. Assisted living and units that were available for folks whose spouses. Were in the nursing home itself. Those people had to spend down their assets in order to. Come to the nursing home, number one, this, I think all the federal Spousal Empowerment Act. That allows. Spouses to stay in their home. But they also, the feds and the state pay a place of lean against the house. So comes to the end. So when it comes to the end, they, you know, so anything. It's a, it's a huge transition for a lot of people, and I just think we ought to have some asset available for that transition.
Yeah.
For the, for the healthy spouse. And so they can be closer to their loved one here at the nursing home. So that was the reason for the curvage. We called it the curvage of around the nursing home. So the. In the original plan, we had the. Infrastructure being born by the county. And the curdage was going to be constructed around the perimeter of the building, and we were going to be bringing in utilities already in this part of the nursing home project. So there wasn't a lot of utility infrastructure that was necessary. Now that we're down at, now that we've, we've shifted from that to the air drive site potentially. That changes the dynamic of where you would put the curdage if you were going to do it at all. So that's why I think we need the, the planning grant. To help us with that. Depending on whether or not we, we determine we want to keep the air drive site in the mix. Because the curdage for the air drive site is much different than. Our original plan, which was to put the nursing home side heighter. On that open field. So we got some stuff that we've got to look at there. Now, there's been a lot of changes. One of the reasons why we didn't move forward with the. Original plan. Was because it was going to be a two year permitting process through the Army Corps of Engineers, but the Army Corps of Engineers now, that's all changed. Okay. Federal government has changed. Permitting procedures for the Army Corps, so. That might be something could potentially be put back on the table. Now, we've spent a lot of money on the initial, on the air drive site. That plant, that plan is sitting there, but ready basically to go to bid. So we get some things we get to think about and talk about as to how all those dynamics might fit.
When you say the air drive site, is that the nursing home?
That's the nursing home.
Okay, yeah.
So that, the air, the air drive site, which is down the road here. Was selected because we didn't have to go through a two year permitting process for the Army Corps. Okay, and we were up against the gun in terms of trying to draw down sixteen and a half million dollars of property money. But that's gone away now. So the, the army money is gone. So the question you have to ask yourself is, number one, whether or not the, the air drive site is something that we will, we still want to pursue. If we do, and we still believe in, in the idea of the curdage, which I do personally. Where are you going to put it? And that's why we need the planning, that's the major reason for the planning grant.
To identify a site.
I did to identify the site, right, and to. Once we identify it and, and the obstacles. Which are probably numerous. The obstacles that are involved in the planning grant. For us to be able to, to achieve that goal. Whatever they are.
And the size.
And the size, right.
When we looked at the, drifted to the air drive site, the space for the curdage build out became smaller.
And we had to use it. It was offsite.
It was kind of extended out.
Yeah.
And, you know, when it.
It wasn't the better, I mean, the first plan was a much better plan, as we all know.
Well, there's no question.
Yeah, the first.
In, in terms of, in terms of, not only in terms of design, but in terms of current usage.
Right. Now, the other side of the coin of this. Is. You know, I'll get ahead of myself here, but it's something I've been thinking about. Is that if we shifted gears, went back to the first site, you could, that the, the money that was spent on the air drive site is not wasted by. That building is ready to actually go out to bid. Well, that building itself. Could be sold to the private sector. And as I said, as saying, for example, as assistant, we're going to need all of that. In this region. It's not like we're not going to need, I, I. It, I know some members of delegation don't believe that we're going to have the silver tsunami, but that's like the cure for COVID was. A bologna sandwich and a shot of whiskey. Okay, it's, it's, it's not accurate. It's just, they can believe that, but it's just not accurate, okay? The baby boom generation are going to need these types of services. So, you know, we could be in a situation where we take the air drive. Component and, uh, upon plan. And maybe spin it off to the private sector, as an example. There's all kinds of things that we could do to try to. Achieve what it is we're trying to do here. And, and create a continuum. A continual care. For our people and having those resources available. And this necessarily means the county is going to run. As an example, let's just talk real quick. I don't want to do a lot of thinking here, but. I've thought about it because. There's, there's an assumption that we wasted two million dollars here, putting together those plans, and that's just not true. We could take those plans and sell it to the private sector, so private sector could build it. So. It's not like they're wasting. So the things we have to talk about is whether or not we want to. We got to find out through the planning process. The actual Army Corps of Engineer issues that have changed, and a lot of them have changed, I know. Because I'm in the marine business and, and our permitting process in the marine industry, the Army Corps is granting general permits for things that, that there. They changed their, their definition of what's known as the nexus. To the navigable waters of the United States. Which was what was driving the initial permitting process. All those things have changed. So. That's why we need the planning grant. To help us navigate. The regulatory process. And then sit back and say, what do we, what do we really want to accomplish here when we get done? I think we had, Ray and I have always. Thought the curdage idea was a good idea. Whether we bring in CAP, whether we bring in the Housing Authority, you know, all those elements.
The other possibility, Mr. Chairman, is, is, as, as we've discussed. Is because we're making the land available at basically for, for free. Then we could draw revenue from that land to help us pay for the nursing home.
Right.
And, you know, working with the private sector on, on a. Request for proposal on land lease that they would, you know, they would manage the building and the occupancy. And we would simply acquire revenue which would be used to offset.
Right, the cost of the bond.
The cost of the bond. I mean, we lost that sixteen million dollars. And, you know, there was people that said, well, you know, you can build this building sixteen million dollars cheaper. Well, I can tell you after two years. Thank God, by, you're not building anything sixteen million dollars cheaper than what you were, what you were going to do then. But also, you know, using. Curdage money. I, I don't know how, how else to say it, to help offset, you know, some of the bonding costs, I think.
Right.
Is something that we need to consider, because honestly, I don't know how anybody can afford to build a nursing home, and, and I'm talking about public sector, private sector. I'm talking about everybody. It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter, right.
You know, it, it, with the, with the uncertainty of Medicaid on the federal level. And the continued uncertainty of Medicaid on the state level. As it impact, as they're impacted on the federal level. And his promises in the big beautiful bill. That it's, they're going to save. You know, hundreds of millions of dollars in Medicaid expenses. I'm not quite sure how that works.
Right.
Of course, they, they have not announced how that works either.
So, so again, those are the things that. The environment is shifting. Let's put it that way. Environment shifting, and we need to be ahead of that shift, or at least understand the shift so that we can determine what is, we want to do and not do. And these are all good ideas, you know, they're all great ideas. And, you know, the roads paved from here to hell in good intention. So that's why we need the planning grant to help us navigate that.
Yeah, and that's what it's there for, is to help you work through some of this. Because you could probably see four paths forward. Which one's going to give us the, the least resistance?
Right.
And that's what you need to do to get somebody in here. To look at, what are your options? What do those paths look like? And then, okay, the recommendation is this. And then you know what you need to do, whether it's find funding, whether it's get permitting. Do you hire the engineer first? Do you hire the architect first? You know, that kind of thing, so. Having that path forward, and I think that's what the grant is there for, so.
So what do we have to do on our, to get this moving? I got to teach you some info on the.
Yeah, anything I can do to. Add to the, the, like, I think I have what I need for the transformative planning grant. Which is due next week, so, you know, that, I, I, I'm in good shape with that. This meeting will give me what I need to add to that. But for the planning grant, they do it on a rolling basis, so we submit it when we're ready. And. They're pretty good. Like, I don't know that they, it's, because it's rolling basis, not as competitive like the one we just did, right? So, you know, I don't want to say you're guaranteed to get it, but you're, you're in pretty good shape if you can, you know. Put a coherent thought together on the application. And then.
Oh, I didn't know that was really close.
They set a low, they set a low bar for us, yeah. So, you know, hopefully, so I don't think we should have a problem getting it. And, and then we just sort of move forward. I think what I would need from you is a more clear picture of what. Two things, three things do you really want to look at? So for example, all right, we want to examine this, like, we've got the site. Identified or the area identified. We need to know what our infrastructure upgrade needs to be, and we need to know what our permitting process moving forward for both. Infrastructure and or the actual construction of the project.
The, the, don't some of those answers come out as a result of the transformative grant?
Not really, no. This is more just like, what's out there? What are people thinking about? Like, coming and talking to you to say, because I, I didn't. SRPC didn't know that you had three hundred acres identified down to sixty acres, down to a, a site, a specific site. Or area within that that could potentially support, and that it would take water sewer upgrades to get there. That information got fed into this, that will bring us to the next phase. So now the transformative grant was more just. It was like a big outreach project. Originally, it was slated to be for Farmington because they had like. Four or five big public works projects that were in the making, that were all going to cross each other, and you're going to rip up the same road twice. So how can we better coordinate this so that you're only doing the work once? Well, with the way the state budget went. Things are getting pushed further out from New Hampshire DOT, so there, we had to walk away from that, and now we're looking at the wider region. So that's where we, that's where, how we ended up where we are, where we're looking through all eighteen communities in SRPC. SRPC's member communities and saying, what are you all doing? Specific to housing and specific to, you know, sort of affordable housing. So that's, that's what this project will do. And seeing how this is, and I was just telling Jen, she's actually. The, the, the overlap meeting that I had this morning was with the other RPCs to say, okay, we're ninety-five percent through this project. What have we learned? Where are we at? And, you know, my recognition was, it's a good project, but this is the first one, so we don't really know what we were looking for. We didn't know the questions we were supposed to ask. And, you know, coming to you all was a bit of a chance because I was here last month. And we were having, and, and the, the shelter conversation led to a bigger conversation about housing, so sort of brought me back today. So that's, so understanding what that process looks like for the TVG in the future. Is important. But, yeah, I think the planning grant is, is a perfect fit for where you're at. You're not in the, well, we'd like to do it. You're not in that phase. You're in the, no, we've got it here. We just need some help to get there. And I think that's, you know, I think we're in a good space, but, yeah, just sort of helping me narrow down your field of vision. For, again, it's only twenty-five thousand dollars, it's, you know. Yeah, it's not going to go far. So maybe what, what are, what are your one or two priorities? If I could get, I think I, what I spoke to you yesterday, if I could get a map of just the general area that you've been looking at. It would help my TPG report just to give a visual, little, make it smooth it up. It'll definitely be necessary for the planning grant application. But other than that, yeah, you're, you're, you're in a good shape. I was telling Diana, you're a lot farther along than I thought, so I think this is good.
And we've got to do some discussion amongst ourselves as to. When you look at those concept plans, what is, do we really want to wrap our. Arms around? That's. That's why we need the planning grant because we can determine infrastructure costs, we can look at all those things that are, that drive the cost of a project.
Yeah. And if you can't get the permits, what good is the vision, right? If you can't get it, or it's going to take you two years, what good is the point?
Well, right, I mean, if it's going to take two years.
Yeah, I guess.
And we understand that.
Yeah.
Then it's okay. I mean, we know, we, we, you know, it's like anything else. This the like, this, 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 they light at the end of the tunnel right there. This is what we're working for. This is what we're aiming for. Instead of us sitting back doing nothing and acting like pod plants in here, anybody can do that. The question is, is that we recognize that. Especially, I know that Ray and I have over the course of time, that. The impact that nursing home care puts on spouses. Is really near and dear to my heart, of my heart, because they, they can help us. If they lived in the curdage next to the nursing home, they could actually help us with their loved one.
Yeah.
Instead of being twenty miles away or thirty miles away, transportation issues become, fall into that. They're going through an emotional and traumatic time anyway, when you think about it. Couples, say a couple's been together for fifty years or sixty years. There's a lot of trauma there, then they have to sell the home that they raised their kids in, and they have to go through all this stuff. So if we can bring some normalcy to that. From, at least from my perspective, I think that would be a good thing the government do. And.
Especially when it can be done at no cost.
Right, to the government, right, to the government. Just make, make it available to people. Well, they're saying they're all going to do it, but I'll guarantee you, a majority of them are going to do it. Because they're not going to have any choice. They're, they're really boxed in.
And these initial steps are what could attract a, a, a private sector partner.
Right.
You know, they're in the business of not, you know. Not, I mean, they take risk, but, you know, if we can reduce the risk.
The risk, right, and say, this is it, period, the end, here you go. The risk, right, and say, this is it, period the end, here you go, what can we do?
Yeah, here's your path forward.
Right, here's the path.
Or or you've already done the permitting, you you just, you just need to.
Right.
Bit it and go on it.
Right.
No, this is, you know, these initial steps are where we kind of exceed or excel. Um, and um, you know, and then implementation, um, you know, partner, or where you put it out to be, as you said. Um, and uh, but these initial steps, um. You know, we're in a bit of a dark, and we gotta find that path, um, so, yeah.
And it'd be interesting to know, with the money that we've already spent, the grant we gave like to Saint Angelo College, what are they seeing? What's the, what's the market saying we need? Everybody talks about affordability, and affordability is is defined, depending on how much money you're making. So, you know, I would say Mar-a-Lago to me is unaffordable, but. So, when they say affordable housing, to me, it's, you know, our workforce is day, is is in trouble. And the cost of of housing is just rising, everybody understands that, the average person on the street understands it.
Yeah.
So, what can we do to make to ease that?
Yeah, okay. Just an example, and. You know, we offered the Christmas program at Riverside for those families that can't afford. We had thirteen families that, you know, and these are people that work.
Right.
You know, and 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 so.
Rest of us.
You know, they're they're clearly working for us, and we're trying to struggle along to make them, you know, the Christmas baskets and things that we're. We're doing, and and we're 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 getting there, you know, we're getting there, so. Um, you know, that's worked out, that's been helpful. You know, but it it's just an example that it's not. It's not, you know, a situation for somebody who's homeless, this is a situation for. A lot of for of working, for working people.
Right, right. And for us to just sit here on the asset, I mean, the legislature recognized that, the legislation in the past session. Passed the laws that any municipal or any political subdivision that had available land for housing. That we should be, uh, they should be promoting that, we are moving in that direction, the legislation did pass that.
As asset legislation.
As as a goal statewide, uh, so. Yeah, Susan.
It's kind of a question, kind of a comment, and I don't know if you'd allow it, but. When you start talking about affordable housing, unfortunately, we get lumped in with the Portsmouth housing market. And that dictates some of the quote-unquote rents. And is there any way that we can get divorced ourselves from the Portsmouth housing? And that, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I mean, huh, you know, huh, puts huh, puts you in metro areas, and so that that that.
How do we get out of Portsmouth metro area? Because we are not.
That would take a federal, that would take.
Yeah, it's literally the the Act of Congress, yeah.
Well, why don't we try?
Yeah, they'd have to set create a separate one for us, I mean, they go from the Boston metropolitan area, then they break it down, there's the MBOs, and we've got. We've got other sta- layers in that mix. I mean, but I don't, I'm not quite sure, even if they took us out of that, what what does it mean? I mean, it takes, so they take us out, okay, fine, fuck, you still have them, you still got market. The market driving the cost of housing.
Yeah.
The only way that's ever gonna change is to, is to increase supply.
Yeah.
Um, if you believe in Reaganomics anyway, uh, you have to increase the supply. I think what we're talking about here is more working within the existing system. Where spouses or individuals or or partners become. Uh, financially burdened. As a result of someone having to be placed in a nursing home, whether it's our nursing home or your nursing, okay? It, there's a burden that's placed upon them. And now they're faced with some of their home. Uh, or or not being able to take care of their home. Because they're by themselves.
And there's also the burden of of working for relatively low wages.
Right.
You know, and and not being able, and and the example I used was not being able to afford to give your kid a a reasonable Christmas.
Right.
I mean, we we have people that ask, you know, what, I don't know who these people are, that's the way we do it, there's two. That manage it, but I mean, when you're asking for socks for for Christmas gifts for your kids.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, you know, there there's an issue there, you know, uh, uh, socks or boots. Uh, snow pants, uh, you know, are are things, um, the courthouse knows, I mean. You guys adopted one of our thirteen families.
It's it's full of toys and clothes right now, we need to give them to Jen.
Yeah, and and, you know, and and they're asking for food. I mean, you know, so it's, it's like, it it, yeah, it's just. So it, and it, every year we do this, and every year it continues to surprise me that. You know, the things that are asked for aren't outrageous by any stretch of the imagination.
Well, we'll see, I guess that's, I mean, look at your information, I'll show you some of the iWash plans we came up with.
Yeah, that's great.
Um, I'll make sure that Janet gets that over to you, we have them on the computer.
Yep.
Uh, and then we gotta have some internal, then maybe some further discussion, meeting with you, so we can focus in on what it is we really wanna try to accomplish. We might have set up a workshop session, put it up on the board. See, these are the things, we, you know, throw all the ideas up there and say, this is what we think, this is what we see going on. You know, and uh, then go from there, I guess, that would be good.
I I think that's exactly what you need to do, you need to, you know, write down what are. Like, kind of like all the outstanding questions, and then from that list, we pick one or two that we can, we can tackle.
We can tap.
Yeah, um, and um, and just get ourselves going, you know. You don't, you don't wanna end up in the um paralysis by analysis situation, you wanna just, you gotta.
I don't want, I don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the.
Right, yeah, yeah, you wanna pick up something and run with it.
Right.
Um, I think this is exactly what they're looking for with with these planning grant uh applications, so I think you're in a good position. Um, and um, um, you know, I think it's a, it's absolutely a good project, so, yeah.
Okay. Alrighty, thanks.
Let me see you all again, thank you so much.
I'm having a holiday, I'm sure I'll be talking to you.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, my advice, have a good holiday.
Yeah. Okay, item four is a, a big on the roof.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman, good morning, everyone. Uh, as of now, the roof is completed. And we are set for January for a meeting with Garland, the manufacturer of the roofing materials for a final warranty meeting, to sign off on everything. I gave you some handouts with some space for notes, if you'd like to make some notes during the issues I talked about here. So to start with, uh, why did we get a new roof? Well, we had a a roof on here that was a single layer of rubber EPDM. Um, need to be replaced about every ten years due to UV and uh seagull damage and other issues. Um, during the course of other projects on the roof and uh previous roof replacements, there were many, many, many patches. Um, the old HVAC units were supported by steel decking that had protrusions coming through the roof, there were thirty-two of those. On our existing rubber roof, um, hundreds of areas for water to intrude into the building, massive standing pool of water. Um, expansion joints were raised above the roof section, preventing uh water from draining to the roof drains themselves, there's only eight roof drains in the center of this roof. Uh, so there were a lot of issues going on there. Uh, key points of the project, uh, on that slide, we have six key points, the steel removal from the old HVAC unit, uh, decking. The stanchion removal, ACM remediation. Repair and leveling of the deck and expansion joints, which are, again, were protruding above the roof on the previous constructions. Uh, installation of the roof and then our edge trim around the outside. Uh, first, the steel removal, the steel removal um was done by JJ Murphy. Came in with a crane, uh unbolted all the steel and removed it and followed it away.
Can I just say one trick real quick, Doug?
Yes.
If you remember, all the stuff was bit out, right, okay, I just wanna make sure that's clear.
Yes.
You're you're on, okay.
Thanks, uh, steel removal was straightforward, unbolted, removed and taken away. Stanchion removal was a little bit more complicated, this required three vendors. Uh, the stanchions were held in first by welding. And then they were um encased in a lightweight concrete, probably between eighty and about two hundred pounds by estimation, depending on how many stanchions were near each other. Um, these were um encased in some materials from the original construction that contained uh some asbestos containing materials. So, Peroni Associates with a bit on that, Peroni would come in. Remove the uh ACMs, and then Murphy would follow right behind, and then the roofing company would follow right behind them, so there's a. Lot of coordination between the vendors there, uh, that was wrapped up in about a week and a half and went smoothly. ACM remediation, again, Peroni, probably the premier um asbestos handler in the New England region came in. Took care of that, got us our certificate and was monitoring the situation for four weeks, and we got a clean bill of health there. Roof drains, roof drains were uh a major uh major problem with the old roof again. The roof was not tapered toward the roof drains, it was just a flat roof in some sections laid over two times, the original roof is not removed, they just put a roll. Roll a new rubber roof over it, so there's some pictures there of the originals, and then uh the ceramic with the steel pan that was used to. Uh, repair those, and that's a fifty-year solution there. Next, we have deck and expansion joint repairs, there's a picture of the original decking there. So instead of having the expansion joint above the original decking and causing a. A mound in the roof itself that would run the length of the uh building, they cut down into the decking and placed the expansion joints right in there, so we have a level roof there. Installation of the roof, originally we had a single layer of uh inch and a half thick styrofoam insulation. Some areas had rocks around the drains, and then we rolled uh, originally, there was rolled an EPDM rubber roof over that. Going forward, what we have is two layers of insulation, the first is attached to the tectum, the second layer of insulation is really the key to the Garland system. Each one of those sheets had its own place, like a jigsaw puzzle, like a paint-by-numbers, each one of them tapered and fit and engineered to. Make the roof tip towards the roof drains.
Really?
And I was happy to report that after the first roof uh was capped, we had an overnight rain. And when I went up there in the morning, uh, the only water was next to the roof drains. There was no water anywhere else on the roof, so it's, it had done its job. Um, two layers of insulation and then a base cap of a modified bitumen, they give a heavy-duty shingle. And then they rolled out the modified bitumen uh top cap on top of that. This is a roof with a forty-year life expectancy, and they're saying pulser towards fifty years with the annual inspections that Garland provides. First ten years for free on annual inspections. Uh, trim installation, the capping around the outside is not a single layer of flashing like it was before, which is susceptible to um. Thermal expansion and to high winds. Um, if anybody remembers from the jail, we lost a section of the roof from high winds a couple of years ago there. Uh, you can see from the pictures, this is a solid aluminum setup, no seams. Um, the base layer is screwed to the building, and then the top cap is snapped into place. And it is about an eighth inch thick aluminum on there, which does two things, creates a two-inch gap at the end of the roof, so nothing can come off the roof. And then caps the original uh layers that they put down. So we don't have any uh wind damage available on there, and then my last slide, just a short list of the benefits, the forty-year warranty. The ten-year annual inspections, fifty-year life expectancy, we've eliminated all of the drainage issues and standing water and ponding issues that were up there. Uh, we've eliminated any issues that would come up with wind. Puncture resistance, uh, seagulls like to open up things that they find in the river on top of this roof, and. Um, the rubber was really uh really susceptible to that. And the increased thermal efficiency with the additional uh layer of insulation, and also this is a white roof, so it will reflect the heat in the summertime. If there's any questions, are you gonna answer any questions anyone has?
Oh, the seagulls gonna eat this?
I don't think so, I think they'd have a tough time, uh, it's it's a tough, tough roofing system. If you think of the way a a standard shingle is composed, this has two additional layers of fiberglass reinforcement in it, so it doesn't move. And the difference between this and an asphalt roof is an asphalt roof would have plastic cement between the layers.
Right.
This has a hot tar poured underneath each layer of roof, and then it's seam welded with an iron seam and a hot roller over the top of it. So basically, we have one completely sealed, uniform piece of roofing, a cap over the top of the building. There's some pictures also in there, uh, the last one, slide ten of uh the ceiling that was done around any of the stuff that was sitting on top of the roof.
You said that it was a white roof, you mean, the color white?
The color white, correct, it's a light gray.
Well, that, like. Well, that, usually seagulls are attracted to shiny objects.
Okay.
And so, will that.
Well, if they do.
Prevent them from, like, being more of a nuisance?
Well, they would, they would drop sharp shells and materials they found onto the rubber roof, which is very, very easy to puncture, this is not easy to puncture. This has two layers of the uh modified bitumen on top of it, so it's a shingle-like material.
So.
When we say white, it's it's almost.
Like a flap, like, it's not shiny, maybe?
No.
So it's not gonna attract them.
If you look at picture ten, uh, no, I think you had the right page. Um, you can see that it's, it's not white, and then.
It's a light gray.
It's like a light gray, I think what Dougie meant was white in in terms of a light color.
Correct.
As opposed to a dark.
To not absorb, right, to not absorb the UV energy and then transfer that into the building.
The last roof we had up there, the seagulls took a liking to the flavor of the roof. It's not eating.
That and the ponding water, they thought it was a nat- natural environment up there.
Yeah, it's just that evil roof, yeah.
There are so many things.
Yeah, crazy, well. This is a project, this is the project that was never ending. It's done finally.
Yeah, North Country really, uh, North Country and Garland and uh all the other vendors involved uh worked seamlessly, and they finished it in seven weeks.
And the one other thing, Mr. Chairman, is I'd like to give Diane credit. For her establishing a close relationship with Gopher. Um, do you wanna just explain to the commissioners what you what you did?
Well, um, you know, we had a, have a one-point-four-million-dollar grant with the Gopher for. A large portion of the roof, um. Because one-point-four million was coming out of the Gopher funds, and then we had two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand in the CIP for the remainder. Of that, and because our cash flow is so tight. Um, worked with Gover- Gopher, and they were, Tom Broderick was wonderful about, um. Working with us, uh, you know, because normally with the state, you have to provide your invoices. You have to provide check copies and canceled checks, they need to see that you've paid the vendor the money. And um, they were um willing to. Uh, give us the money in advance when we produce the invoices, so that's what we did, we have. All of the money except for a hundred thousand dollars, they wanted to retain one hundred thousand dollars. And so this week, the checks will be going out to pay the vendor, um, the roofing vendor. And um, once they cash the check, we'll uh send the canceled checks. And then we'll get that last one hundred thousand dollars back, so it really helped us with our cash flow. We just really didn't have the cash flow to pay out, um. You know, the, it was a little less, um, you know, because we had spent a little bit of money, but for one-point-three-million dollars, so they were, they were. They've been great to work with, so.
And and if you remember, it wasn't always that way, I mean, I mean, you know, at the, at the beginning. You know, Gopher, um, working with Gopher presented some challenges, um, you know, because they were under strict. Federal scrutiny, uh, cause this is ARPA money, you know, so they were under some, what they believed to be strict federal scrutiny, so. I mean, they didn't do anything wrong, they were just carrying out what they felt they needed to do in case of a federal audit. Um, and I I think that, you know, we were able, I I think they wanna finish up by the end of the month, by the end of December. Just why I kept pushing Dougie, uh, you know, to get this done, and and um. You know, get it paid for, uh, so that we, cause I thought at first we were gonna be under the old system. Of not be being reimbursed and having go to governor and council and and all that stuff. Fortunately, uh, we didn't have to do that, and we, you know, got the money much quicker.
Yeah, sometimes with the state, we've had to wait a while, and, you know, they'll come back and ask you for something else, but they they've made this process. Very easy, um, and I think a lot of it, like Ray said, you know, they wanna get this done and get the reporting done. To the end of the year, cause that's the requirement, right, with Gopher, so.
So we're, well, you know, we couldn't be happier with it, it's how it's worked out, Diane did a really nice job of of. Working with Gopher and and Tom Broderick, who's always been very accommodating, in fact, was. I think they were kinda sad when we. I think they were kinda sad when we walked away from sixteen million dollars.
Mm-huh.
Uh you know, they said, oh, we really feel bad. They kept calling us about the votes and and when we walked away from sixteen million, I think they felt bad. You know, oh, we're really sorry, you know, we had this money for the side for you and and
They extended the deadline for us, you know, it's like, let let us know how the votes go, because things were getting delayed and they they really wanted it to work out for us, but.
But in in any case, um um I I I think that might have been one of the reasons why they were inclined to give us the one point four and the work by uh Representative Potenza and Senator uh um Gray and uh Executive Counselor.
Joe Kenny.
Yeah, Kenny. Um you know, everybody worked together to make this happen and and then we were kind of the the tail at the end of the dog, making it actually fall into place. So you guys, you you did great.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for supporting us.
Well, I know it was the noise, it was the issue.
Yeah, noise.
I felt bad for the vendors, you know, cuz we were driving them crazy.
Yeah, they were they were they were very flexible. When it became an issue, um they were able to move work to another section of the room. And uh there was some Saturdays involved where they were doing more of the heavy stuff.
And they didn't charge us for any of that extra.
Yeah, and and Murphy uh Murphy would come in at four thirty and work till midnight.
Yeah.
You know, to remove the uh the concrete and the steel.
Wow.
Yeah, it moved quickly.
And and no one charges any anything above the bid price for for being so flexible with the time.
Yeah, that's really great. Well, thanks Doug, you're already done with this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that's it with the roof, guys? All righty. I'm gonna push off item number five uh right after we get that, dealing with all the new business, okay? So we get so we get a list of upcoming events coming up. Um and then we got, now we got all the new business. We got any all the new business for the bow?
I I I do not, I'm not sure it's my place to say this, but um congratulations to you for um two things. One is the um the the probably close to a hundred thousand dollars in donated items that came from Liberty Mutual that that you pulled together and we sent staff down yesterday to pick up, which will and help in every aspect of county operation. I know like and I, the only the only reason I say this is, I mean, the chair I use has ripped arms and you know, ripped seat or stuff. Maybe I can find a chair, you know, and and you know, rather than spend county money to do that and
Right.
and you know, there's people that you know, instead of ordering desks, you know, we have desks and the other thing is um it when I received a call from Summersworth, um the new city manager there. He wanted me to make sure that uh when we were talking about the three point five million, he says, well, does that include FFNE? And I told him about, you know, that a lot and all the FFNE, but a lot of the FFNE is gonna come from what um you were able to acquire uh through uh Liberty Mutual, so um congratulations to you for that and for pulling that together. The second thing is, um of course, we're hoping about that five hundred thousand dollar grant, which we're working with CAP on, which would eliminate the necessity of of the contributions you know, for this year from um Rochester and Dover, which they've already appropriated. But I'm sure they'd be happy to know they didn't have to pay it out.
Dover, Dover has, yeah.
Yeah.
Dover's already, well, we can reimburse them if, you know, if if we get out the, you know, if if we work that out.
I think they wanted, you know, well, they're on a
They're on a, they're they're on a fiscal year, so.
No, forget that.
You know, and the third thing, um for any of you that didn't read the paper this morning, um the city council voted eight to one to support Dover City Council voted eight to one to support their share, which is the more than fifty percent share of the potential for the three point five million dollars, which we all hope will come in at less than that. Uh but in my conversation, mostly by email with the C, with Mike Doyle, they decided to leave the three point five million um and then we bids are reviewed. So I know Dougie's working on reviewing the bids and and the conversation that Dougie and I had is that Doug's gonna do like a spreadsheet for us, um analyzing, you know, my suggestion is take the lowest three or four bidders. And you know, uh see what it make a make a complete bid somewhere and if that pushes you into bidder number five, you know, then just go as far as
It took all seven of them, you lined them up and you said uh demolition, uh you know, remediation, electrical.
Sure, we have a couple rows of 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 basic, what was asked from the RFP and then we have other rows to the right of that.
Right, yeah, right. Dougie and I talked about that, so we, you know, he's he's gonna be working on that and and you know, I I there might be some that you know, are 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 just on the basis of as you get into it, you know, presuming that we start with the lowest bidder, you know, as we move up. And if somebody seems to have satisfied it and if the bids are higher, then there's not probably a whole lot of energy to be put into those bids, but but I mean, that's something I leave to your discretion that the commissioners will review when, you know, hopefully by next week.
Yes.
They're gonna be done by next week?
Yes, it does, yeah.
Yeah, that was kind of that's right. That's the planning that Dougie and I had discussed for and after after we opened the bids, Dougie and I met on Friday, on Monday. After we opened them on Friday and and uh that was kind of the plan.
Okay.
I mean, there's no no point in in looking at bids that, you know, to 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 start with that are just more expensive than a complete bid, you know, from someone else, so. Um
I got it along the same lines of that conversation. I got a call from Liberty again this morning. They have some more things that they want us to go look at to see whether we want them or not, so I told uh Nick that Liberty too, that I would be by as soon as we left. I left here um to see if there's anything else in there that we could probably use. I'm trying to grab as much as we can. I've gotten about, I think we've gotten about two thirds or more of the furnishings necessary for the long term.
That's a far
Uh so uh the interesting thing that we're gonna have to look at with that, um even though I spent two hours with the Dover City Council last evening answering a bunch of questions is that I did agree with Mike Doyle. That we would sit down and relay some of the neighbors' fears, uh a lot of the neighbors showed up, they had a lot of kind of misinformation. Uh so uh they've given me all their email addresses and their phone numbers and because the information that they were getting was just not accurate. It just wasn't accurate.
Well, you know, unfortunately inaccurate information comes out to support negative votes.
Negative vote, that's correct. None of it was, none of it was accurate, so I'm sitting there just having to answer questions on things that were just So I spent the whole day at Liberty. Last night, I mean, as a result of being in Liberty in a freezing building, I
Is it cold in there?
Oh, yeah, it's cold in there.
Yeah, we have, the other part of this too is, I mean, we do have a jail. And we and we do release people.
I brought all that up.
And and you know, we you know, perhaps, you know, perhaps there can and and we land on, you know, there is transportation that's involved, that's part of the deal with with the vendor.
Right.
Plus, we have the additional transportation here of it being on the bus route.
Right.
So there's really no
I discussed, I discussed.
There's no practical reason for for people to walk in either, in you know, either County Farm Road or County Farm Crossroad.
Right.
I mean, there's
Well, not only that, the bottom line here is, there's nothing out here. So we're we're gonna have to provide the transportation. Right now, when they close center down, they're they're transported back to the 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 communities of their origin. Um and there are drop off points, which are, you know, the Dover train station and downtown Rochester and Summersworth same way. And that's gonna continue and I I explained that to them at least thirty times. Um that we do it now, that we have PCs that come out of the jail and we make sure people get rides. I mean, oh, I mean, we have a lot of things going on here that require that. And really, what it boils down to is that they don't want it here, they don't want it. They they can solve the problem on their own. It's it's, but they haven't been able to solve it for ten years. That's what, that's that's the bottom line, you know, and I met with the neighbors afterwards and try to relay their fears. I think that they have just given a ton of wrong information, just a ton of, just
Well, I mean, we fortunately, it's not like it's something that's opening next week, so we'll have time.
A whole year, we had a whole year.
We have a whole year to to work with.
Assuming that Rochester and Summersworth, Summersworth mayor contacted me last night at eleven thirty. They said that uh he thought that the Summersworth Council was gonna vote in favor.
I I think Dover was the linchpin.
Right.
You know, because it's in in Dover's community, I think that I think Dover's the linchpin and I'm glad Dover went first.
Right.
And I'm glad the vote the vote was so so decisive.
Right. The um
I mean, we knew it wasn't gonna be unanimous, but um I think eight to one is pretty close.
It's pretty close, right. So we'll work to try to be good neighbors uh with the folks around here as the state progresses and uh I'll speak to them all. I told them I'd even have a go over and speak to their old neighborhood meeting if they wanted to, because they, the uh the counselor again tried, Councilor Cullen tried to get the county to purchase some form of insurance uh for the homeowners of the region.
And you know, those things don't exist, right? They they
No, of course not. And I says, then what are you gonna do about the rest of the crime that's committed across the county? We're gonna ensure those folks too, I mean.
Is there such a product?
There's no such product. The only thing you can do is if I I know this sounds strange, Lloyd's London, you know, does some unusual things, but I think this is even beyond them.
Yeah, the um, yeah, it's, I I just says, I I said, where would you draw the line? Where are you drawing the line when you want me to talk about having, I asked them directly. I said, where are you drawing this line that you want this insurance policy for? We don't have any insurance for all of the Summersworth right now. Well, they cried. I says, you know, you're you're stating, he was he was stating facts, at least in line from the information I've got from Summersworth. Wasn't the same, just wasn't the same.
Right.
Um so it was a long night, but anyway, got done. So we're gonna move forward with that. One thing I wanted to ask you, you guys get that phone call on the solar stuff yet? Do you have that call yet?
Yes.
Is Diane's?
I did it.
Okay.
Um, well, yeah, we got that, um let me
I I think it might be better time wise, Mr. Chairman, if we just put it on next week's agenda.
Yeah, because I do have some information and probably gonna need a little bit of help because it was getting more technical.
The weeds, yeah.
You know, I'm a finance person. When it gets into the technical, you know, when we're, but they do, what they do, they did provide was cost of a total project.
Yeah.
Um and what the savings was in per year
Right.
and the payback period. So they did provide three different scenarios for that, for three different, I I learned quite a bit through through that, but you know, when it gets into technical things, maybe what I think I understand is
And I think I think what what I would just ask is is an opportunity to sit down with Diane and some of the things that she knows I don't. Some of the things I don't, you know, not, so if we could just
Not a problem. And and on the same lines, this co-generation thing with EverSource, where we sit, I know you got a lot on your plate that, yeah, Mr. Adam.
Yeah, no worries.
I know you think you were picking the low hat.
Low, yes, exactly. And um another item of um not to get off track, but another item of Olden Division, just wanted to give you an update. I come to you a couple of weeks ago uh to the commissioners about the Unitil reimbursement for the insulating of the pipes at Riverside.
Right.
Uh the consulting firm came through yesterday, took the temperature readings that they need and Johnson and Jordan, um the mechanical contractor is set to start Monday on insulating the pipes in Riverside.
Oh, great. That's the one where they, yeah, EverSource paid about ninety percent.
And the, yeah, and the gentleman who's uh in charge at Unitil for administering that came yesterday with me to view the entire place and uh to take all those readings and he has the application and once that's done, we hand him the invoice and it's taken care of.
Yeah, and they pay ninety percent. So I mean, I'm getting better deal than that.
Right.
But like, it's it's like you said, Mr. Chairman, we're just trying to do the low hanging fruit.
Right, right. I believe uh the co-generation was uh contingent on what was made for a decision with the solar.
Right.
First.
Right. So I think, you know, we can probably talk a little more about that next week.
Sure, that's fine. Or even at the beginning of the year, whatever time we take, I just I just don't want it to fall off.
Well, well, I think, you know, I, yeah, we're we're not, I mean, we're continuing to pursue it. Again, it it might not be the big thing, but we're continuing to pursue the improvements.
Right.
Especially the ones that EverSource pays ninety percent for.
Yeah, and and the free engineering from GDS, that's huge, it's just thousands of dollars.
Okay. All righty, so uh all right then, we'll move on. There's no more old and new business. We kind of made his questions or comments from the public regarding the agenda. Any questions, Denise?
You have a view on budgets?
Right.
You wanna do that because
Yeah, well, um
I I I will tell you, Mr. Chairman, the budgets that I have to present um might include a reduction in force.
Yeah.
And I, rather than rather than doing that in public
Right.
I would, you know, I know there'll be an opportunity for a budget to be presented. I know there'll be an opportunity. Every, my goal is every budget that's submitted will be less than last year's.
Well, if that's the case, then it's gonna involve personnel and as far as I'm concerned.
I I really don't wanna send a panic in that.
Yeah, right, through like high organization, we can't do that.
I I I I don't want people, you know, running out the door because they think their job's gonna be eliminated and when we don't even, when these are just proposals.
Right.
So I'd ask, uh because it involves personnel, that it be done in non-public session.
Good. And 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 what I will say to you, Susan, in this regard, if it's uh if there's something that's glaring, that's gonna stick out, that's non-public, non-personal I don't mind putting that on the public agenda because we'll have a, we'll have a time when the commissioners will present a budget.
Yeah, but I wanna see what you guys are discussing here in a commissioner's meeting, not at a public hearing, where we get stuck literally minutes before
No, I understand that. No, I don't know. I'm talking about the county commissioners presenting the budget at a public meeting, not the one upstairs of the delegation. Okay, I'm talking about our own, our own meeting. Okay, but if it involves personnel, I'm not gonna
Are you gonna be discussing the budget in non-public session today?
We're gonna be discussing
Are you discussing?
Multiple, multiple budgets.
Multiple things, okay.
Multiple budgets that
Not the whole budget.
Not the whole budget, no, no, just sections of them. That might involve personnel.
No, it does involve.
It does, yeah, okay. All right. So with that, unless you have any other question, says anything, no. All righty, so uh James came in motion to go to non-public session, versus that's the personnel and the budget, so that contract negotiation is going on. Okay. Uh Commissioner Felicia, our guardian of call, yes, Michelle, yes, myself, yes, okay. That was a geneticist, the commissioner, we're in a non-public session. Thank you all.